Thank you, David. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning to everybody and welcome. We will call a order of the regular meeting of Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, January 28th of 2025. A couple of housekeeping items. We are live streaming the meeting and we are recording the meeting. And with request, if you have any type of an electronic communication device, if you please put them on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate that courtesy. I hope everybody had a chance to get a copy of the agenda. If not, I think we have, do we have any extras over there or we run out?
For now, but I can make more.
If anybody needs a copy of the agenda, we can, we can give you one. We always begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Then remain standing. We're very privileged today to have our new President Judge, the Honorable J. Craig Cox, with us, Your Honor. It's a pleasure. Could we impose upon you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you very much. Vanessa, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Sinado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Bogler?
Here. Thank you. We have a forum. Under the next item, explanation of procedures to the audience. We'll note that during the course of this meeting, we, we have two, two opportunities for public comment. One in just a few moments and then one prior to adjournment. If you'd like to make a public comment, you're, you're very welcome to. You're welcome to speak both times. If you'd only like to speak once, that's fine. And if you're just here to listen and prefer not to speak, that's, that's equally fine. We ask that your comments be related to county government matters. If it involves a state or federal issue, we suggest you speak with your state or federal elected officials. The same would be true if it's a municipal issue, a city, borough, township. We would recommend you speak to those folks. But if it's a county government matter, you, you've come to the right place. If you do have a public comment, we'd be asked to state your name. And we also ask if you try to limit your time to around five minutes or so out of respect for people's schedules. We'd appreciate that courtesy as well. But right before we get to public comment, we always set aside time for any of our other county elected officials for any reports that they may have. And as we did note, our President Judge, the Honorable J. Craig Cox is with us. And I believe you're here for an agenda item, Judge. But do you have anything over and above that?
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. It will take us to public comment at this time. I'll open the floor if anybody has a comment or question at this time. Yes, sir.
Most of you know me. I guess I'm new to DAMI. My name is Robert Morano. I'm a citizen of Mesianic and also a former business owner, an elected official at downtown. I know that Newcastle perhaps has so many ideas about downtown and you know I'm passionate, it is a city, but it also is part of Lawrence County. Like the first of all, men, you guys that had the courage and the time to run for the office of an elected official. I know how difficult it is. I appreciate your efforts. And I do know two of you very well and your dedication to the staff, to the county, and also to our constituents. My concern is of what you know is going to come out is that too many naysayers, et cetera, in our community and downtown. As a previous owner of a business, it's very difficult to discuss the same old issue. But the downtown, I have a very large passion for it, as we previously discussed. And I just would, I just would appreciate a little bit more, what I say, understanding and cooperation and dedication to the difficulties, not only downtown Newcastle and by other communities. I really believe wholeheartedly that you do try and used to go visit different municipalities, which I thought was an excellent, excellent idea. But after the election was over, in my mind, I've said it before and I'll say it, I think partisan politics or officials must let that go aside and work with different communities, et cetera, et cetera, you know, as concerned elected officials. And I also believe that we can't, or you can't, or any elected official can't stay within their own bubble. There's so much knowledge and sharing of information, not only to help yourself, but to help other communities, gather all the historical background of the fiscal responsibilities. And I know most of you guys understand that. It's just a passion that came out of me during the last episode that we had a couple of weeks ago with the Newcastle news leaving our city. It's not just them. They have that right as a business and I certainly understand that. But I would just very much appreciate in the back of your heads if you would keep and try to work with our city municipal people and work together, not just when difficulties arise or agenda items that pertaining to a specific issue or need. I think the needs to be some type of relationship. And also Mesianic, as you know, mainly, you know, I did run for that office and I do get along with those people very well. I, you know, my opponent and I are good friends. And I just believe that our communities need leaders like yourselves. But we must exist, please, beyond our little bubbles. And that's all. And thank you for listening to me. And as to conclude, and I just, I do understand, appreciate what you guys take on day in and day off. Thank you.
Mr. Morano, thank you so much. And we appreciate your interest in the community. And you've proven that by in the past, as you noted, serving as an elected official. So we thank you for that. Yes, sir. Are there other public comments anybody would wish to make at this time? Hearing none, once again, before we adjourn, we'll reopen for any additional public comments. Next on the agenda would be fiscal and contractual matters. By the way, the documents to which we will be referring are all available if anybody wishes to take a look at them. And Debbie, when the meeting ends, I'll be sure to give you my packet. We have two warrant registers, which are also known as check reconciliation registers that are submitted to us by the county comptroller's office. It's a listing of all the bills that have been paid. These are dated January 16 and January 22 of this calendar year. I'll give my fellow commissioners time to look them over. And then, gentlemen, if you're so inclined, whenever you're ready, I could take a motion to accept these two documents. But please take your time. I move we accept the documents.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor. It's consecutive. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Also in our packet, we have the minutes of last Tuesday's meeting, January 21. A little bit of a contrast. At last week's meeting, we had nobody in the audience, nobody at all. And today we have pretty much full house. So that's nice. It's good to see everyone. The minutes are in your packet, gentlemen, if you'd like to look them over. And whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to adopt the minutes.
Let you know the end. Last week, nobody wanted to come out of the house anyway.
That's true. It was a little colder last week.
I love it. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion. Gentlemen, thank you both. And if there are no, if there are no other questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to reports from the commissioners. And Commissioner Kennedy, you're first on the list today.
I got a couple of things. Last Friday, we heard the courthouse, we have the leadership Lawrence County group here along with our state representatives and some township, two townships supervisors were here. And Ben, his group from the Lawrence County Chamber did a great job. I know we got to talk to and tell them what was going on, but they also got to tour to jail. And I didn't get to talk to them after that. I warned them about them on over there, so we'll see how they did. But it was a very nice morning we had Friday with them. And that's always great to see young people involved in our community and coming out for that every year that we sponsor here at the courthouse. So the other thing is Chris and I spent Saturday afternoon down at Elwood with a group of people at one of their fundraisers for the revitalization of Elwood City. And as always, it's a, it's a good time to get out and see everybody you know. So we got out and got some stuff done in the cold and the snow. It was worth it. So that's all I have.
Dan, thank you very much. Looks like I'm next on the list. And you, you covered the Ford Lawrence and you covered it well. So on that, I have nothing else. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Sanada.
I'll just echo Commissioner Kennedy's comments on the leadership Lawrence County. It was here on Friday. That was, this is the second year that we've participated in that. It's always a good opportunity for, it's very diverse group within the community to give them a lot of history of what happens here in the courthouse. Like Commissioner Kennedy said, saw in jail, get a chance to go up to the courtrooms and see what the operation is here. Because a lot of people actually don't understand what does happen up there. And so you do that, get that, that, you know, appreciation for the staff, the employee efforts. And I think anyone had a chance to tour it. And the last year was very positive. We got some really good positive feedback on Friday. You know, they're impressive what they're seeing up there through all the offices. So that's a good thing. As Commissioner Kennedy said, we had an opportunity with Elwood. And it was a nice fundraising event for economic development down there. Got a chance to visit some of the leaders down there. And it's always nice stuff now that they do, they do a great job. I had an opportunity Friday night to visit some of the labor leaders from Mercer of Lawrence County. So that's pretty much was my weekend. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We move on to new business. And Vanessa, our first resolution, what number will that be?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And we're, this first matter involves the courts. And we have three folks from the courts. As noted earlier, President Judge Cox is with us, Court Administrator Amy Musio, and the Law Librarian. Hope I got that right, Joe Allen, sorry, Law Librarian. You have for us a proposed contract. Would one or all of you care to come up and present it to us, please? Thank you. It looks like we are entering into a contract with Ponce and Reuters. Could you give us some of the details, please?
Sure. So Ponce and Reuters provide a lot of subscriptions that are in the Judicial Law Library. Let me take a step back. So President Judge Cox asked that I review the items that are in the Judicial Law Library and the items that are purchased for the judges. This is in addition to the Law Library upstairs. So this is a different item, a different contract. So after review, there's six different vendors. And one that has the most items is the Ponce and Reuters. And to decrease some items is saving some room. Some items are not used. Other items, there are duplicates of different things. There's items also that are in the Law Library. So if we are able to circulate as necessary, it would say not purchasing multiple items for different places. So the suggestion would be to enter a contract with Ponce and Reuters. The minimal contract they'll enter is a two-year contract. So it would be for two years, beginning February 1st of this year. And this would allow a set amount per month to be spent. And we would know that going forward for the next three years, what those monthly costs would be, which is very nice. Currently, if we left it as is, it's approximately $3,325 that we'd be getting next month just for the items from Ponce and Reuters. The new contract would decrease and it would be $1,669.14 each month for 12 months. The second 12-month period would increase. Obviously, as a business, they have that increase at the end of the first year. It would be $1,802.67 for 12 months. And then we would be able to review that contract September 2026 for renewal, cleared with first of 2027 again. But in the meantime, the savings over the two-year period would be $39,912.14 for beginning February 1st of next week, February 1st of 2025. And then it would end January 31st of 2027. In the new contract, we would have to look at it again. So after review and discussion with both President Judge Cox and District Court Administrator Amy Musio, we believe this is the best option.
Joe Allen, thank you for that helpful background of explanation. And speaking of explanations, I should note to folks in the room or anybody that might be watching the meeting, county code, which of course are all state laws that govern what counties can do and cannot do, what boards of commissioners can and cannot do. Very interesting. They stipulate that all contracts have to be run through the Board of Commissioners, whether it does involve the courts or any of the elected officials or any of our departments. The contracts themselves have to be approved at public meetings, which is what we're doing right now. So you're witnessing that, that process. And once we vote on, on the proposal, ultimately, we'll have a document that the three of us, I believe, will have to sign. I particularly want to express, and I'm sure I speak for everybody up here, our appreciation not only to you, but to Amy and to Judge Cox. I know a couple of weeks ago, Judge Cox told us that he would be a cost-conscious President Judge. And this is proof of that. So thank you, Your Honor, and Amy. I'm going to see if my fellow commissioners have any questions. I'll start with Commissioner Sanada.
I'll just follow up on Chairman Bogler. Thank you, Judge Cox and Amy. Joe Allen, I mean, I think it, I think that this is substantial savings and it's going to provide people needs that you have by looking at something like this. I'm sure you've done extensive research and we appreciate that. So which is, this is a two-year, what about like for a third year, is there an option?
Well, for new, they actually offer, the shortest term would be two years. They offer three years or five years. As we all know, the election coming and these judges and thinking that the best option there would be to do the minimal amount of two years. And then any changes that were made at that time, we're not stuck into a five-year contract. So maybe a little bit of decrease additional or somebody may just have something else.
And I'm just saying, it sounds like you guys are a really great deal here. That's, we can see that.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's nice to know exactly how much the cost is going to be every month.
Sure.
And that, sometimes the laws change so much that there are a lot more updates and items that are shipped. And that includes all of that. And other times there are lots of money, but it does allow that fixed cost. I would like to add also that there are a couple, a couple other companies that we receive items from. And some changes are going to be made with those as well. And that'll be approximately $10,000 additional savings with those cancellations to those other companies as well. So that's just in a one-year period, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, and Amy, and all of you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanada. Commissioner Kennedy?
I know we met with Joe and I met with you and Amy last week, Judge. You talked highly of you researching all this. So you've got a great team up there and we appreciate what you're doing, Judge.
Thank you. I do have a great team.
Yeah. And so that's it. Just thank you, all three of you, for getting this done and saving us money. Looks good on our end.
I could just take 30 seconds.
Certainly.
If you don't mind, I know you have a busy agenda.
You're fine.
Joe came to Amy last year in the fall and pointed this out to her once Amy started as a court administrator. And she said, day one, you have to take a look at this. I said, day one's New Year's Day. And I knew day two. And at that point, we did, in a couple of week period, we had probably about a dozen formal, informal meetings with my law clerk, Jim V., Amy, Joe Allen. Joe Allen's Law Librarian, really, for the Judicial Library. She volunteered to come down. We did an inventory of everything. And you did a really detailed inventory. She contacted all the publishers by email, by phone, several times because they really, she was trying to get a cheaper deal. But she really worked hard on it. Amy worked hard on it. We met with the judges. She met with the other judges. Amy and I met with the other judges to talk about the different pricing, what we needed. And we felt we could eliminate a lot. It still towards quality judicial services. So I just want to commend Joe Allen and Amy for all the work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, and as well Amy and Joe Allen. If there are no other questions or concerns, could I please have a motion for approval of Resolution 15?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both, Dan and Chris. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. You folks are very welcome to stay, but we also know you're busy. And if you have to move along, we understand. But it's a pleasure seeing all three of you.
It's a pleasure.
Have a good day. We move on to Proposed Resolution 16 from Mental Health and Developmental Services Office. Scott Baldwin is the director. And Scott, it's great to see you at the courthouse. Did I miss?
Number two.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, thank you for catching me.
I quit the job.
Jennifer, my apologies. My apologies to both of you and my colleagues.
I always go first.
I got a stopwatch on. I'm telling them we got to move ahead. We're moving right along today.
I, I could say I did that just to see who was awake, but that wouldn't be right. So forgive me. Scott, we'll get to you in a minute. Jennifer, my apologies. We are dealing with Lawrence County Social Services, Proposed Resolution 16. And Jennifer Elliott from that organization is with us. And it's always a pleasure to have you here, Jennifer. Yes, it has. Welcome back.
Thanks.
This proposed resolution would authorize LCSS to apply to the Pennsylvanian Department of Community and Economic Development for $750,000 through the home program for affordable housing activities. But I'm going to let you give us all the details if you could, please.
Yeah. Great introduction and thanks for having me this morning. The county has supported a regional project for the past five funding cycles, which has crossed over about 15, 20 years. And through that, we've been able to service over 300 units throughout the Commonwealth. Majority, though, in Lawrence and Mercer County are partnering agencies. So the county, Mercer County has opted to go into a relationship of an MOB because DC needs require it. So bottom line is, we're looking to reapply for $750,000 on our occupied housing rehab. And we hope to service about 16 to 20 units.
I thank you for that information. And I'll see if Commissioner Kennedy has any questions for you, Jennifer. Thank you, Dan. Mr. Sanada? I was very self-explanatory. Thank you for your explanation. Jennifer, in terms of a timeframe, obviously, I suspect we're going to vote to approve this. Will we have to sign some documents, I would assume?
I'll have to with Vanessa.
Okay. And she's always on the ball, so I suspect they will be signed by the end of the workday, if not sooner. So we'll have those for you. Because I'm sure time may be of the essence.
Application is due on Friday to ensure the single application process.
We're happy to help you. Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution 16?
I'll make a motion for Resolution 16.
No, I'll second.
Thank you both. Are there any other questions for Jennifer? If not, we'll ask Vanessa to call a roll, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Again, forgive me. It's always great to have you here. You are certainly welcome to stay, but we know you're a busy person. So if you have to move along, we do understand. Take care, Jennifer. Now, Mr. Baldwin. This time, this time it's official. Scott Baldwin is our Mental Health and Developmental Services Director. We're very proud of the work that both he and his staff do day in and day out. And you have a couple of proposed contracts. I think maybe in the interest of time, could you talk about both of them? And if my colleagues are willing, maybe we can just take one motion for both of them, if that's appropriate, if that works for you.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, great. So Scott, the first one is Peak Potential Therapy Solutions. Could you fill us in, please?
Yeah, these are both for our Early Intervention Department. These are for newborns and toddlers that are born with some type of delay, whether they're speech, physical therapy, something like that. These are both occupational therapists that support those children. So that's the contracts. And sometimes as during the course of the year, we need to add some different providers. That's why I'm here today is we needed more providers to help us. So that's what Peak Potential and SOR both do. These are 100% paid through by the state. This is no cost to the county and this is an entitlement service. So there's no budget. So it's based on referrals we get. We pay that and we're 100% reimbursed by the state. That's how the Early Intervention Department. So there's two more providers that we need. That's what we're looking for.
Thank you for that. That's, that's helpful to know. Do you happen to know, Scott, where the two organizations are headquartered or based out of?
Both in Butler County.
I see.
Control the EPA? I think that's Butler.
That's Butler.
And Cranford.
Yes. Okay. And you operate, correct me if I'm wrong, your, the bulk of your contracts are usually July 1 to June 30. Does that explain why these two will conclude on June 30 of 2025?
Yeah, the contracts both hold on January 1st, 2026 to June 30 of 2026. Since we're already.
You said 26. You mean 25?
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Is it possible then that six months from now, you'll have another problem?
Once again.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Let me see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions for you. Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Kennedy? Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, are you willing to take one motion for both of these?
Sure.
Okay. Could I have a motion then for Proposed Resolutions 17 and 18?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both. Any other questions? Scott, anything else we've missed? Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Scott. It's a pleasure.
Thanks.
Have a great day. We now look at Proposed Resolution Number 19. And we have with us this morning, former Commissioner Brian Burek. Commissioner, if you'd like to come forward. Mr. Burek is, I'll say, our relatively new tax claim director. I think you've got two or three weeks under your belt already. And you've hit the ground running. I'll let Brian give the background on this proposal. Suffice it to say that it is a service that is needed in the tax claim office and that he and his staff interviewed, we participated in part during this interview process, two different potential providers. We did, we did clarify with the solicitor that what we're discussing today is, falls under the definition of a professional service. So it did not necessitate a sealed bid process. And we did make certain of that in conversations with the county solicitor. So Brian, if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to you and you can give us the background, please.
As you know, the current provider is offered the Lawrence County Tax Claim Bureau.
is a company called EST. They were bought out two years ago by another company called Vision Government Services, and they made the business decision to stop supporting Tax Claim Bureau's software. So, county was formally notified on December 9th, that as of December 31st, the company would back up the software, and then that would be the last time. They would no longer back up or support the software. As you know, our software needs updated monthly and backed up regularly, because we collect liquid taxes, and every month, the liquid taxes when they interest charges are added. So, we were in a situation where we had to replace our current software. I contacted all of the companies who provide this service, and as you know, two companies came and did a presentation to the county. Uh, after those presentations, I asked for proposals. One company stated that they're currently uh, working with too many other counties and couldn't take us on immediately as a client. The, the final company, GSS Government Software Services, they're based at Homestead, PA, which is a suburban county. Uh, they did submit a proposal. I reviewed it with my staff at Tax Claim and former Director Foster, who's working, as you know, on a contract basis, uh, part-time. And all of us agreed that the GSS provides uh, an updated software system that would meet the needs of our office. I had checked with other counties that use them. In western Pennsylvania, they provide tax claim software to Warren County and Armstrong County. Uh, both of those counties' tax claim directors gave very positive reviews, said this company's very uh, responsive and helpful. And so I've been recommending that the county enter a contract with GSS Government Software Services, effective February 1st of this year. Contract term runs two years and 11 months, through the end of 2027. And the good news is, even with the one-time uh, initial cost of $10,000, the ongoing monthly charges are significantly less than what we've been paying. And for 2025, it's actually a savings of $17,000 over last year. This will give us newer, more modern software that will meet the needs and continue the operations of my office. Um, the ongoing monthly savings will be over $2,162. So, we're gonna get new software at a lower price than what we've been paying. So I recommend approval of this contract, please. I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Burek. Appreciate you and your staff working, working on this. And I'll see if uh, Commissioner Kennedy has any questions.
I just have a comment. Brian, now, when we say you had to hit your feet running, you really did. And um, I, I tell you, I, I come over and ask you some questions, I know, and ask the girls some questions. I sat in on both of your uh, meetings with the people for a short time, but long enough to know, when that second group come in, uh, their software was totally different from the first group, a little bit more, what I'll, I'll consider user-friendly. And uh, you guys spent, not hour, you spent four or five hours with both of them, extensively going through what we needed to change. And um, I tell you, I gotta give my hat's off to you. You did what you needed to do from day one, and uh, we got it done. This is gonna be good for us for the future with uh, updated software. We couldn't do anything with the old stuff, so. Great job. Appreciate what you've done, you and your staff. We weren't really that well involved with it, but we were. Got to see what was going on, so. We thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Sanada?
I'll just add, with that, Brian, I think it's important, um, yeah, this is, you know, the goal was to improve technology up here at the courthouse, and um, your office is very important to deploy that, and I think you got the ball rolling immediately, and uh, cause that's, we were in a critical situation with, that occurred with the fire company, and not going to do work. It was critical, and uh, I think you were especially, and uh, by seeing the uh, results and uh, the savings to the county's gonna be substantial over the next two years, so that's good news to the taxpayer. So we're happy to see that. Between you and Judge Cox today, we're, we're having a very good day, so uh, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Brian, anything else for us?
I appreciate your cooperation, and uh, you came and met both companies, and like I said, this new product is, I, our staff, we're excited. The old system, like I said, literally, it's software from like, several decades back. This new system's much more uh, modern, and uh, we'll be able to do uh, what we needed to do in this company, and can even customize it further. There's, there's a few little things that they presented in the software, and uh, the other counties I checked with said, yeah, they've been able to meet the needs of their offices. Is every, even though the tax claim laws are the same around the state, every office has slightly different procedures, so this software looks good to begin with, and they are able, they have the ability to customize it as soon as.
Thank you so much. Could I please have a motion for Resolution 19?
I move we approve Resolution 19. I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And uh, I assume at some point today or tomorrow, we'll be able to sign the necessary documents? Wonderful. Brian, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. The next two items, which will take separately, but they, they both tie together. For those of you who have been to our meetings in the past, the uh, state law permits the Office of Register and Recorder uh, to collect a fee uh, that is earmarked for affordable housing efforts. These fees are charged for, when, when deeds and mortgages are recorded in that office. And the, the fund is then established, known as the Affordable Housing Fund. And we've been able to utilize those dollars, they're not tax dollars. Again, they are fees that are collected uh, when these documents are recorded in uh, Tammy Volnance, uh, Tammy Crawford's office, excuse me. For many years, we have uh, distributed money from that fund for uh, an organization known as the Mission Barn, and we'll be getting to that shortly. Uh, we've also uh, provided funds to an organization based in the Elwood City area, known as The Carpenter's Project. That's a summertime project that undertakes uh, rehabilitation and some uh, upgrades for homes of individuals that might not have either the wherewithal or the ability to make those repairs. We don't have a request at this time from Carpenter's Project, but normally, that request comes in sometime during the spring. What we do have in front of us, though, the first proposed uh, resolution, we initiated last year. We were approached by uh, Anita Mills McHever, who's been very active in our community for many, many years. And uh, Anita is with us today, and um, she has established a first-time low-to-moderate home buyer, a closing cost grant program, and uh, Anita, if you don't mind, I'd love for you to come up, if you'd like to, to give us a little bit of background on this.
Sure.
I, I do wanna note, before we turn it over to Anita, that um, last year, we were able to earmark uh, $50,000 from uh, from this, oh, I take, wanna pass along?
That's just the latest report.
Thank you. Um, la- last year, uh, we were able to allocate $50,000. We, we very much like what this program has done, and we very much like how Anita has handled it. We have been noted, it's been noted, though, that the uh, there have not been the number of, of transactions lately that there had been in prior years. And accordingly, the uh, the fund balance is a little bit lower than it's been in prior years, unless I'm mistaken, Joe. That seems to be my understanding.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So, what we're able to do today, and, and it's, we wanna help as much as we can. Today, we're able to go with a $40,000 allocation. I wish it could be 50, but we're able to do 40, and we, we, we want you to come back each year.
Oh, we will.
Okay. So with that, with that background, I'll let Anita give us some, some specifics on what this program does.
Yes, and I wanted to first thank you very much for what the 50 from last year. Uh, you gave us in April, and we've used so much of it, so that's why I'm coming back to you. Um, it is for low income, low moderate. It's 80% of the area median, which is not. It's, it's 50-some thousand for a one-person household. Um, and we do ask that they're first-time buyers, which is anybody that has not owned a house in the last three years, and that it is in Lawrence County, and that they don't have more than $5,000 in liquid assets after closing. So we let them go through all their closing and, and, and use all their grants and whatever, and still have $5,000 left. We don't want, but we don't, we did have enough to deny a one-person, because they didn't have too much money in their city, so we try to be fair. So as of, we have the last one on this report closing Thursday, that was 18th. Uh, most of them received the full $2,000. A couple of them didn't need all $2,000, so there's one that was $1,900, and one was $1,500, that's what it was. So, they do come in, we, I need to look at one-on-one, face-to-face, we go over um, the home buying process, we look at income and assets, and verify it with documentation that they do follow, the guidelines. And then I bring it, usually try to bring the check to closing myself.
No, it's, it certainly sounds as if it's been a
Yeah, it's good.
Very successful. Programs helped a lot of people. Is it safe, and I, I appreciate the fact that you said it, it's, it's applicable to the entire county?
Absolutely.
So have you had some applicants from different parts of the county?
Oh, yeah. In fact, yeah, these are all over, all over the place.
Good.
Yes, a lot, some Michigan, a lot of Upper North Hill.
And, and I see that, that in some instances, uh, you are, the, the, the home buyers are referred to this program oftentimes by their realtor.
Realtor, bankers.
Yep, that's wonderful. Thank you. I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions.
No, it's just, uh, you know, this is what these funds are really earmarked for. And, you know, when you came to us with this, we thought, okay, we'll give you $50,000 and see what you can do.
Give me two years.
Yeah. You didn't mess around. Which is good, because now we got people paying taxes on these houses, and um, you know, it's, it's a good cycle to be in.
And everyone that closes puts one way back in the fund.
Yeah. So, we, Anita, thank you.
Thank you.
This is really something that I like seeing happen, and I think the rest of us up here really did, so we thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy, Commissioner Sanada?
Yeah, I just, uh, Anita, I'm pleased to see how quickly you got this done.
Give me money, I can stand that.
As Chairman Bogner says, it's, it's, we can only spend what we can afford. Yeah, that's philosophy.
Rates, rates affect the guy.
Yeah, and that's what we've been doing, uh, this year. Sometimes the number's higher, sometimes the number's lower, and uh, we tell that to every organization when they commit for money. As, you know, we, we, you know, we wanna help, but it all, it all comes down to what revenue we committed. I think, you know, what you're looking at here is our only source of revenue, and that's property tax, uh, as, you know, to put yourself on occasions. We don't get an income tax, we don't get a capital tax, we don't get a sales tax, so we are relying on growing the economy, whether it's business or residential property donors, and putting forth property on the tax rolls actually generates more money for the county. So, we consider this an investment. This is not just a program to get money out, but by getting these people into these homes, and uh, you know, they're paying their property taxes, that's how much revenue does come back to us. So, uh, keep doing it, keep finding and helping these people in the homes, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanada. If there are no other questions or concerns, would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution 20?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anita, it's always great to have you here.
Thank you.
And uh, we wish you continued success. Have a great day. And you're, you're welcome to stick around, but we understand if you have to move along. Next on the agenda, as it, it ties in with the Affordable Housing Fund through the Register and Recorder's Office. As noted, uh, for many years, we have been utilizing funds from this account to assist the Mission Barn organization, which is a nonprofit entity that works closely with the United Methodist Church. For many years, they were known as the Eastbrook Mission Barn, and they were based in Hickory Township. And a couple of years ago, they moved to Shenango Township. So since they're no longer in the village of Eastbrook, they now just call themselves the Mission Barn. They do great work, uh, specifically for modular access ramps to folks who need assistance in getting in and out of their homes. Uh, what we're looking at today is utilizing $15,000, it's 15, 15, from the Affordable Housing Fund, uh, for this calendar year. And I should note that they have written a formal request to us for this uh, disbursement. Uh, I'm gonna see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
I have any questions, just a comment. I've had an opportunity towards this facility, uh, for many years, uh, Chairman of Fire and Legislative and, and as a commissioner. I did see the great work that you're doing there, expanding, and doing some good stuff out there, so I think this is, that money is well-staffed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Thank you so much. This is Resolution 21. Uh, would one of you care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. If there are no other, if there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Proposed Resolution 22 is a budget amendment that comes to us from the Planning Office, which of course administers the Community Development Block Grant Program, not only for the county, but they also serve as the administrators for uh, Union Township, Shenango Township, and the borough of Elwood City. And they, this, this budget amendment notes that the revenue, CBPG revenue, that was unbudgeted, has come in at $91,470. And what they are asking us to do is, number one, officially note that revenue, and then uh, note that it is divided in four ways. $38,000 goes towards the County Administrative Expense Fund Account. Uh, $18,270 goes to Elwood City Borough's Administrative Expense Fund Account. Uh, $19,400 towards the Shenango Township Administrative Expense Fund Account. And finally, uh, $15,800 towards Union Township's Administrative Expense Fund Account. They're noting, this is fiscal year 2022 administration, their administrative funds. Joe, anything else you know over and above that?
No, just not, really, I don't anticipate a revenue coming in at this point, which is nice to see.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sanada, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay, thank you. Would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution 22?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Thank you both. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, we do have a couple of administrative transfers. The opioid advisory board uh, has been active, and uh, believe they've made a couple uh, allocations that they wish to have take place. So this budget transfer, and Joe, if I misstate anything, let me know, but I think what we're doing by taking the action we take now, will allow for these uh, allocations to uh, carry through. Thank you. So we're taking $78,000 from the opioid contingency line item, and transferring that towards the allocation line item, specifically towards Vision Ministries. And then, uh, the second part of this transfer would take $100,000 from the contingency line item, allocate it toward, or earmark it toward the opioid allocation line item, specifically towards Lawrence County Drug and Alcohol. allocated toward, or earmarked toward the opioid allocation line item specifically towards Lawrence County Drug and Alcohol. Mr. Vanasco chairs the advisory board. Do you have anything to add on this, Joe?
No, not at all. Basically, when we get the funding, it goes into the contingency account. For us to be able to make a payment to any of the providers that the requests are approved by the commissioners, we have to move it into a line item that allows us to pay out. Contingency doesn't allow us to make a payment. We can move it to administrative.
Here's my bad memory. We're going to take this action today and have the transfer take place. Have we already, have we as a board voted on this recommendation or has that happened next?
You've approved the Vision Ministries through Resolution, but we have not approved, it's the Lawrence County Drug and Alcohol called DUI Center.
Oh, the DUI Center, excuse me. Thank you for noting that. And so that'll be forthcoming.
That'll be forthcoming.
Okay, great. So at some future meeting, we'll be making that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Joe. Let me see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
No. Straightforward on that.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then the second request is a small transfer from Children and Youth Services. They are asking for a $64 transfer from their contracted provider care line item into that of association dues. So these are the two transfer requests that we have. Would one of you care to make a motion to approve both of them?
I move for both.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under announcements, we'll note that the Board of Commissioners will meet once again a week from today, Tuesday, February 4, in this room at 10:00 a.m. It's open to the public. And the Lawrence County Planning Commission, as of right now, is scheduled to meet for their regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, February 12, at 12:00 noon. And that meeting will take place at the Neshanik Township Municipal Building on Mercer Road. And that meeting is also open to the public. And then looking just a little bit beyond that, I'll note right now that the courthouse will be closed on Monday, February 17, in recognition of the President's Day holiday. So I don't think there'll be any mail delivery that day either. That concludes our voting matters. Let me then open it up for any public comments that any of you folks might have.
I have a question.
Debbie?
How much is in the Affordable Housing Fund?
Joe, you thought there was roughly 89?
88,000, so some change.
Now, is it before, after the money today?
That would be before today.
Okay.
Before today. Now, with a little note, we haven't got what would be December's
That's right.
Yet numbers for December of 2024. It's always delayed by about a month, so we will be receiving that. So it's through November 30.
So it replenishes itself monthly, which is called catch-up time, as Joe just mentioned. Anything else, Debbie? Any other public comments? Hearing none. Thank you. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners. I'll start with Mr. Kennedy. Sir, thank you. Mr. Sanada?
No.
Thank you, sir. We always ask Vanessa and Joe to make sure we didn't forget anything. Have we forgotten anything? Vanessa, we're good on your end? We thank you all for joining us today and look forward, hopefully, to seeing you all a week from today. There being no other business to be brought before this board, would I please have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. I'll throw the same sign. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. David, thank you for helping. I appreciate it.